And rise again. Fellas, can we have roll call, please?
Greg Kershaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer, Zappson. Tyler Fulenkamp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Burke.
Here.
Okay, Matt Dyer's on vacation this week, so we're running with us the four of you. First thing we have this evening, for the sake of time, because Melissa has to leave, so I'm gonna have Melissa and Greg Kitson come forward first. Oh, yes, excuse me. You all emailed a copy of the minutes from our July 5 meeting. If you had a chance to review those minutes, I'd look for someone to approve, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Motion from Wiley.
Second.
Second from Craig. Nice attempt from Scott. Sorry.
It was really good.
All in favor? I oppose the same. Minutes have been approved. Now, first thing on the agenda. We're all familiar with Greater Decatur, a group that Mayor Schultz started back in 1314. And as part of that, Greater Decatur, that committee has led us, I think, in a lot of ways, to where we are today on a lot of our projects. They had the foresight and the vision to look ahead and look at the projects that we could do. Quality of life projects, just projects to make our downtown better and more friendly. And one of the ways that they did that was by way of a resolution that I think you all have a copy of, it was something we passed when I was on City Council, as Resolution 2015-7, a resolution of the Common Council of City of Decatur, which expresses council support of numerous capital projects to be undertaken within the next five years, including projects identified in the city's stellar strategic community investment plan, and which commits city funds for such capital projects. Tim, it took me like three breaths to do that. I know you could do it in one, but I read it slow. Anyhow, this resolution was made, and from there, we started a lot of planning for projects. We weren't ready to do those projects in 2015, but we started the planning for those projects. And I think the copy of projects that we have done thus far, you have it all there from 2015, 2016, and on the back, 2017. Last evening, Greater Decatur met, and I asked Greg if he would be so kind to come this evening and give his two cents worth as to how Greater Decatur would like to see us continue to move forward in 2018. Greg?
Thank you very much to all members of the Common Council of City of Decatur. As Mayor Meyer said, my name is Greg Kitson. I've been involved with Greater Decatur since its inception, that Mayor Schultz is urging back in 2012, actually. One of the things that he wanted to do was reach out to outside voices of people that were active in Decatur and try to find out what made Decatur unique. And that's one of the things that we've really worked for. After we got our initial group of about a dozen people together, we became involved in the Stellar Community Program in the state of Indiana, had a successful application but did not make the finals. The second year, we had another successful application but did not make the finals. In the review with the state officials, we were told that we were really far ahead of a lot of other communities at that time, so we didn't lose momentum. We decided to go ahead and not pursue another stellar application, but take what we had learned, what we had learned how to talk to state officials, what we had learned with our connections, and start doing things ourselves. One of our concerns was people in the community would get the idea that, gee whiz, we lost. No, we did not lose. We won in many, many different ways with all of the information that we had. In support of that, City Council in 2015 passed a resolution that Mayor Meyer talked about, which was a five-year commitment for $2.5 million to support those projects, many of which were part of Stellar. Now, if you look at the back page of the resolution, Exhibit A was something that was put together and sent in with our Stellar applications of projects that Decatur city could do as part of its Stellar projects. This was our wish list. I would like you to look at the highlighting that's on this wish list of things that we put together in 2015. Several of them are complete, many of them are underway, and many of them are coming soon. This means we did not sit back and take our defeat lightly. We won in our Stellar application process for what we learned how to do. Now, in 2015, if you look at the second page that the listing handed out, this is a listing of the things that were done in 2015. Of the $2.5 million over five years, I want to make the point, this was not $500,000 a year. This was a five-year commitment for $2.5 million. The first year of 2015, we did not spend $500,000. $215,000 was invested in our community in order for us to get things going. In 2016, we saw that number come up as we brought these projects to fruition, and we invested $425,000 in our community. In 2017, we are well on our way to investing $500,000 this year, and if you don't believe me, just try to drive around the block. Look at what we've done in our community. So, with that said, what we would like to do tonight is make a recommendation during your 2018 budgeting process for the following items for consideration, which are listed on the back page. 2018 funds spent or allocated for capital projects, these are the proposals that we think are going to give the most bang for the buck in our community. First floor construction of the Second Street Lofts, which is the Biggs Music House project. First Street property acquisition, additional riverfront acquisition, moving towards future projects. A marketing campaign to tell people outside of this room that are in our community what we have done and what we are doing and what we're continuing to do. Because we're going to ask the community to support us in many more projects. The renovation of the Masters Heating Building into a very unique artist loft facility where art can be done to support the sculpture tour. Another $50,000 to invest in the transition of the ownership from City Utilities of that building to the City of Decatur. It was purchased by City Utilities as part of that project with all of the sewer, CSO stuff. Now it needs to be transferred to the City of Decatur so we can do more with it. And here's the big one. This is what I really want to be the diamond, the diamond in what we're talking about tonight, is a $250,000 investment in the initial phases of the reconstruction of the Hannah Nutman Sporting Complex. And create a complex that is a safe place for our families and our children to go and play ball, so we don't have to worry every time a kid decides to run across the street where mom and dad parked. We want to be a lot safer than we are. We, I believe, have been very lucky in the fact that we haven't had an incident of significant proportions in that facility as it has evolved. Hannah Nutman was not planned, it just happened. There are many, many things that we can do with it. So, with that said, tonight, we are asking to make our 2018 official as part of the budgetary process so the city can move further towards the fulfillment of these goals. If anybody has any additional questions, Melissa, I, Ken, Tim would be happy to answer those questions at this time.
Yeah, I'd like to interject some things, okay? And just kind of go through each one of these. The first floor construction of the Second Street Lofts, okay? As Biggs develops the former music house into the loft housing, the first floor will have two ADA compliant apartments on the rear side. And then coming towards Second Street, there'll be an area that will still be owned by Biggs for use by the 16 loft tenants. And then the balance of that, the front portion, front one-third to one-half maybe of the downstairs area, will be deeded, we're supposing, is supposed to be deeded back to the City of Decatur. Now, we can finish that however we want, okay? So that's what this would be for right now. We don't know exactly how that's going to be, but we have to plan. So, setting aside that money for doing that. First Street property acquisition, again, there is still some property over there without naming specifics that the city may need to acquire. And I think setting aside $100,000 would be a good, it may not be enough, it may be even more than enough, but I think it would be to our benefit to do that. Jumping down to the Masters Heating Building, yeah, the $50,000 is not a full payment for what we want to pay the utilities for that, but it would be a good down payment towards that. We may have to do another $50,000 the next year. But nonetheless, there has to be a way for us to pay the utility back for having purchased that building. And it's been difficult for us to even talk about what to do with that building when the city doesn't own it proper, I mean, it belongs to the utility. So, this would help us so that we could talk about that. I know that Tyler and Kurt, you guys had run over, and we looked at it that one night, and I'd asked you about, you know, raising the ceiling, and we all realized, you pointed it out to me and kind of woke me up, slapped me upside the head, that that would cost more, way more than, you know, it would be cheaper to build new than to do that. And in a meeting that we had following that, we were talking to Alex Mendez, Melissa and I were, and we kind of were dejected by the fact that, you know, hey, what these artists that were here in June suggested for us to do, we likely weren't going to be able to do. And he goes, "Well, what did they suggest?" And we told him, and he goes, "Why would you need to do that?" And we said, "Well, you know, for them to build big art pieces and whatever." And I said, "You know, where do you build now?" He goes, "In our parents' barn, him and Greg, and Greg Mendez and Alex." I said, "Well, how do you move things around? Don't you have a crane?" "No." He says, "Muzzle." He says, "Predominantly, Greg uses me." And I said, "So, we don't need a crane?" "No, you don't need a crane." And I said, "Well, what about, you know, the ceiling height?" He goes, "You're not going to have these well-established artists here. This is for entrepreneurs, and they're going to be beginners, because they're going to be building very modest-sized pieces." He says, "That workshop back there is plenty big as it is." He goes, "It just needs cleaned up." So we felt a little better about that, whether it's metal sculpture, whether it's pottery or basket weaving, I don't care. But whatever it is, it's not going to be established, long-term artists. It's going to be young people trying to get their feet on the ground. So, the, all the fanciness that those artists were telling us we needed in June, we really don't need. So, took a long way to get there, but anyhow, the renovation of Masters Heating, we'd like to put money into that. And again, what we're going to do, I don't know at this time, but I think it's something we all need to discuss. And then lastly, yeah, the Hannah Nutman Ball Diamond reconfiguration. We still have in our budget for this year, not 2018, but for this year, a $50,000 line item for a capital campaign marketing strategy, where we will hire a marketing agency to help us go to the public, get the public to buy into the three capital campaign things we talked about almost a year ago now, that being Hannah Nutman, riverfront development, and an aquatics park, those three things. And the first and probably the easiest thing for us to do would be the Hannah Nutman. It gets used so much, and the planning and the engineering for that is much easier. I mean, we don't even know what we want to do to the riverfront yet. So, picking off the capital campaign at some point yet this year and throwing the seed money of 200 and a quarter of a million dollars from the city, I think would be a really cool way of picking off that capital campaign. So now, it's open for discussion. This was just Greater Decatur. I attended their meeting last night. This was coming from on that table right back there, what came from this, and, you know, I think it's all open for debate, you know? This isn't set in concrete, this was just their recommendation. I'm open to anything. It's not Greg or Melissa's decision, it's the four of you and Matt. It's your decision how we want to invest for next year. Open to discussion.
So you said this was for phase one of the ballpark? How many phases would it be, and what would the first phase look like?
No, the seed money for the ballpark project. One of the numbers that was thrown out for Hannah Nutman was $2.3 million. So, $250,000 of this uncommitted money, we feel would be a good investment to show our community that the city is behind this project, because we're going to have to reach out to the community to do this. There's going to be the Scott Murray Junior softball diamond, those types of things. We're going to have to go to individuals. So, we're going to take a quarter of a million dollars. Our recommendation is that the city will take and show its faith in this project and invest a quarter of a million dollars in it.
And the figure of the 2.3, that was just an engineer's estimate. We really do believe that with our own city crews and in-kind services, that we can probably do it substantially less than that, so.
So, and this is all money that has been tentatively approved in a broader spectrum. We're just trying to define it. And keep in mind that the fifth year of the program, if we would spend the entire $2.5 million, there's another $610,000 that's been unallocated. And we, as Greater Decatur, are going to be coming back and continuing to communicate with the city, saying, "Look at these successes we've had. What about the next five years?" As we start planning for that, as we use that money to invest in ourselves.
And back to Hannah Nutman again. When I came to council some time ago and asked for these three initiatives to be things that we wanted to set out and do, we did go out, and we have, we have three different renderings for Hannah Nutman right now. Meller Land Surveying, Brett Meller, has made three renderings of what he could conceive we could do out there. Right now, there are seven, is that right? One, two, three, four. There are seven diamonds out there. And some of his drawings, there would still be seven fields out there. Some of them, we've taken it down to six fields so that we could get more parking. One of the renderings he has moving to the COFAX League, which plays at Worthman Field, over to that park, which entails having, you know, deeper fences, bigger kids. Regardless, a good chance we would move the men out of Hannah Nutman. And we've talked to the men's league officials, and they're fine with that, just so we give them a place to play ball, so.
On the marketing campaign, the $50,000, we're talking really, this is another $50, correct? Okay. All right. This is in addition to what's already been.
This is 2018 marketing, that we had ready to go. Would be this year.
Okay.
I think Hannah Nutman's a great location, a great place. I'm just concerned about the traffic. Are we going to discuss that with Bungee? Because that's where all the trucks go in the fall.
Yep. Right now, the way it's configured, it would still leave that road all the way open, all the way around, so that Bungee can utilize it, it would still be able to. One of the big differences is that it would have an entrance off Washington Street, where right now, the only entrance off Washington Street is where the Bungee trucks pull out of there.
Yeah.
And then directly behind McQuix. Between those two, there would be another entrance to a nice, safe parking lot area. So, and you know, I was thinking I could have made a PowerPoint and showed those renderings. Tyler?
Greg, for the $50,000 that we allocated for last year, is Greater Decatur working on that marketing campaign, or?
No, that $50,000 for the initial marketing campaign for those three projects that Mayor was talking about, is something that the city is going to coordinate. Greater Decatur is not going to actually coordinate that. Once it happens, the Greater Decatur will be active in helping roll it out and make the solicitations and make the asks. But we feel that we need some help from people that know what they're doing and how to tell our story properly. How you tell the story, how you make the asks, makes all the difference in the world.
And then my other question is, I guess, what is Greater Decatur's view, or if you can speak for their view of, we're talking riverfront development, and we're looking at this Marx Building, and it's a rundown building. And if you're going to put riverfront development on the river, and you want to make the river a magnificent place, why are we going to stick $150,000 into something that's an eyesore? I mean, if we're marketing this river, it's going to be a beautiful place, that you want to come to the river, that Marx Building is not something that you want to come.
Greg's opinion, not speaking for Greater Decatur, but the conversations that we've had around the table in this room and around other tables in the City of Decatur have been that riverfront development is something that would be very, very desirable. How it eventually plays out is going to be something that's going to change a dozen times between now and the fulfillment of that project. I believe the goal for the Marx Building is to take that industrial rundown, as you put it, look that means that this has been something that's been here for a long time, that it is part of our community, and take that industrial hardness and make it part of the sculpture tour and part of the artistic area of our community. That is Greg's opinion on what we can do with that building. Now, the reality may be that before we invest in any significant portion of this, that there will be engineering research done on that building that proves that it's not a good idea. That is something that is entirely possible, and those viewpoints will be sought after as we try to determine what we're going to be doing. But envision somebody with an anvil and a forge and sparks flying, that's something that that Marx Building is just suited for, to do that type of thing. That is Greg's opinion.
Tyler, when, in your brief look at that building, do you think structurally that it's not worth investing in?
My opinion is no.
Well, you're more of an expert on that than anyone else.
My opinion, I would, some people would look at it, and I'd say, my wife would look at it and say, "This is a beautiful building, you can do this and this and this with it." In my head, the dollar signs start rolling, and the dollar signs are higher than what you can do this and this for. I mean, I understand the artists are going to need a space to work, and it's a great idea, but we're going to dump in, I mean, by the time we pay for the building, I'd say we'd be over $300,000, $400,000 in this building. How are we, as a city, going to get that money back out of that building? I imagine they're going to have to pay some kind of rent, but to pay that kind of, when we have empty buildings all around this town that somebody would be willing to rent, I just, my opinion is that that's a lot of money to put in a building like that to house something like that.
Yeah, I think the other reason that that building was even looked at was because of the proximity to where the artists' lofts are. And in talking with the artists when they were here for the sculpture walk, they talked about the fact that if you had a workspace that was readily available, that that would help attract artists to the lofts, if that's your goal, is to have those occupied by artists. So that was, I think, the reason why. Now, whether it's feasible or practical, that's an entirely different issue.
And that's an important consideration. Now, if that can be the centerpiece for a sculpture garden, as the artists put these works together and then locate them in the riverfront as part of the theme, that can all work together. But when it comes right down to it, is it financially viable? That is yet to be determined.
Kurt, you were over there also, you've looked at the building. What's your opinion of the structural integrity of it?
Structural integrity of it's good. I mean, there's a lot of steel beams in there, and, you know, hearing about the anvils and the sparks and the hammers, that's great. My concern comes in when they start turning on the settling tanks. That gets expensive. Settling tanks for our strength, that gets expensive. Other than that, I mean, if they don't need cranes, they don't need the raises of the ceiling, that saves a lot of money right there. But I agree with Tyler, I think they're going to end up dumping a lot of money to get it what they need.
I mean, being on the, I mean, I don't, maybe I'm out of line saying this, but being on the planning commission, we just rezoned a whole industrial area where buildings are readily available, just two blocks down the road, too. That, I mean, not to say that they would be interested in that, or it could be a possibility, but.
Oh, set behind West End?
Yeah. Several buildings, I mean.
Good point.
The proximity's really close, I don't know that.
All of those are going up this way?
Okay, well, I don't think that this evening we need to have a motion to move on this. I think tonight it was introduced, I think that we can, we can sit on it, we can discuss it more. This can be changed. If that's okay with council, I would recommend that we just think on this, maybe we come up with our own ideas, scratch some things, and, you know, I'm good with that. I just want to keep the progress, the momentum going that we have right now.
I want to thank Greg for coming in. I mean, I'm new to council, I wasn't here when you.
Started all this.
Started all this, or passed the big amount, but I don't know if there's any way we could work it out, maybe once a month or once every month, we could have a representative from Greater Decatur come and tell us what they got on the books, so keep us in the loop a little bit.
I'm going to interject with that a little bit, because when we were stellar hungry, 2014 and 15, Greater Decatur was meeting about every other week, and long meetings, and it was all volunteers, and.
I appreciate what Tyler's saying about reporting to council.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is something that Greater Decatur had gotten away from because there was no really cool stuff to talk about. But there have been things going on, so I think that is a very.
I don't want to take up all your time.
No, that's a very downer plan, to have five minutes once a month.
Just a briefing of where you're at.
That's good. But what I was, where I was going with that is that they're not meeting as often as what they were in 2014 and 15, because we're not putting together a stellar plan, you know? Now, instead of every other week, it's, you know, about every other month.
Excuse me, the next five years is coming up.
Yeah, so we'll have reason to meet again.
Yes.
Well, and I would just interject one thing. And if you look at the, if you look at the, yeah, how many projects have been done, are underway, or about to start? I think that's a real testament to our community, that we, as Greg said, we weren't going to be defeated by the fact that we didn't get selected for Stellar Community status. The fact that we got shortlisted two years in a row, and it required us to do a lot of preparation, a lot of planning, a lot of talking within the community to identify projects that were broadly supported, has allowed us to get to this point. And, you know, there's an adage that how, how do you ask anybody to invest in you if you're not willing to invest in yourself? Well, this is tangible evidence that we are investing in ourselves, and this is something that we want to promote to our community and beyond and request their help, because we can't do it alone. It does take an awful lot of effort on the part of people and resources. This is where people within our community can step up and help out. So, that's the point of this. And, you know, in talking with other communities that have done similar things, you know, success breeds success, and you get a momentum and things keep going, and that's what Greg is talking about, the next five years. It's not going to stop at the end of the funding that was appropriated for the five-year capital project campaign. So, I think it's, it's great that we see this, and it's going to be able to give us the ability to market ourselves in the capital campaign that's probably coming.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Don't leave yet. Melissa, you can, you have to go. She has to go. She has another appointment.
Just so you guys know, that I am currently working on the budget, and I'm hoping to have it to you by next council meeting. I'll probably deliver the packets to you prior to that, so you can review, and then we'll go through them all. But if you can think of what you want to add to those budgets by next meeting.
And without a, without a motion, just by nod of head or whatever, can we go ahead and allow, Phyllis, to assume we're going to ask for roughly $750,000, maybe different items, different projects, but, so that she knows how to maybe start trying to plug these in, because she'll take some things from Riverboat, some things from Rainy Day, and, yeah, there's a lot of different places that she has to plug them in. So if that's okay with council, for, to her, just so she knows, you know, it's going to be 700, $700,000. to be 700, 750,000 in that range, is that, and I, I, by consensus, not by a motion or anything, so that she can continue to work on the budget.
That's fine for planning purposes.
Yeah, the, the items are, can be totally different if need be. Okay, good. Thank you, Greg. Really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks, Kurt. Next up is our friend from Fort Wayne, Mr. Rankenberger. Rod Rankenberger, he's here to talk about the flood buyout proposal for 2018. He was here a month, month and a half ago, and he's back and ready for us to make some decisions. I think I, Aaron, did any of you have a chance to see the email I sent you?
Mm-hmm.
With the scenarios? Okay, they all did. Rod, come on up.
They just want white. What's this will do? Is it total? That's a total Decatur man.
Thank you.
You guys want one for the media?
We can share this one here.
He wants to put it on the radio.
Yeah, I'll retake that one.
The ones by a star. See the green stars? Oh, I know you don't really see them.
There we go. All right.
So, go ahead, Rod, take it away.
Councilman and Mayor Meyer, thank you for the opportunity to come back before you again. I, just, if I may, just to give a brief history or historical background, most recent flooding event that you had was in June of 2015. It was the, to my recollection, the third highest crest that the St. Mary's had ever risen to. And once again, I, which we've known, the city and MRBC has known, that we're not done with our mitigation yet, but you know, sometimes when you don't have a flood for a number of years, people get sort of complacent. Well, that brought everything back to light again, and at that time, with the assistance of your former super, building superintendent Roger Gage, while we did a campus and tried to do some outreach with some of the flood people that were impacted, and we had received, I think it was 25 or 26 statement of voluntary participation forms. And after we did that, we came to the city council two years ago, we were able to get enough money to buy five houses. Those have been purchased and torn down. We came last year again, and the council graciously appropriated funding that we could buy six more. I, to give you an update, those six homes are currently being appraised. So within the next 12 months, those homes, providing that the property owners or the homeowners accept our offer to purchase, they will be down as well.
Because they're the yellow stars.
Those are the, yes, those are the yellow stars. Uh, so, fast forward now, I, what we are hearing, and when I say we, the National Association of Home Designers are hearing that Congress may not fund the FEMA hazard mitigation grant programs beyond 2018. That's a big concern, it may or may not happen, but we've been advised to apply for as much FEMA funding as we possibly could. That and the stars just happened to line up, thanks to State Representative Matt Lehman and a number of his colleagues, the Maumee River Basin Commission received a $1 million appropriation during the last general assembly. That's afforded us to be able to help you folks here in Decatur a lot more than what we have in the past. Uh, we're getting back to the days when Mayor Ish was here and we were able to provide you quite the cost share match. So as our funds continued, we had to get away from that, uh, and, but now we're prepared to step up to the plate again. If I may, I, I've got that on the screen now, I'm just going to go through that real quick, and then I'll go through three different proposals. What this map on the screen is representing, the green stars are the properties that Decatur has already acquired, those were torn down through the, the Mayor Ish and Mayor Schultz's tenures, as well as, as Mayor Meyer's. And as, as the mayor pointed out, the yellow stars are those six properties that were currently getting appraised and will eventually, or hopefully be torn down. Then, the, the dark blue stars are what we are proposing to include in a proposed grant application. And hypothetically, and I, these are some key points, and, you know, the gentleman before talked about success. You as a community from your flood mitigation have been very successful, and to point that out, if we continue this, hopefully my mouse will go up here, yeah, if we continue this from Dormat Street all the way out on, on the west and south side of Parkview Drive, there will only be two homes left. To me, that is substantial. And then on the, on the east and north side of Dormat, if we went to the best proposal, there would only be five homes left. Why are those left? It's important to know that it's a voluntary program and we can't force them to sell. So we, we're sort of at the mercy of the, the participants being willing. Now, I'm going to move this up here a little bit, and then I want to focus, I talked about Parkview Drive, now I want to talk about Meadow Lane. That's sort of the area that we consider as our highest priority, and with the proposal, we thought we were down to four properties. Kurt Whitty, the mayor, contacted those folks, we set a meeting up, we were going to come down and, and have a general discussion with those four property owners. Unfortunately, we only heard back from one, I believe is correct, and so we canceled the meeting. Since then, or I, I should say, I think the day of, the mayor was informed that one of the property owners had unfortunately passed away. Since that time, the heirs of the estate have talked to the mayor and they are interested. So that takes us down to three. I, I have spoken with one of the others...
That would be the three gold, gold squares.
Correct.
421, 422, 428.
And so then, I spoke with one of the, the folks out there, you know, they just, again, it's a voluntary program and they just quite are interested, yeah. And I believe one did not respond, and then the mayor and Kurt had tried to contact one of the others, and again, the stars must have lined up for today because the mayor made contact with, with one of the other ones, and called me just earlier this evening and said, "Rod, would you be willing to talk to this property owner?" And after talking with him and the encouragement of the mayor, he's now on board as a willing participant. So that's going to take us down to only two properties or two structures left on Meadow Lane's.
421 is the one he's referring to, so everything on that side of the street would be gone.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Everything on the north side of Meadow Lane's would, would be purchased. So I think that is, that is pretty substantial, and it also makes a lot of sense from your emergency response personnel, that if we can eliminate blocks of areas they don't respond to, that's, that's where we're really being successful in, in the mitigation activity.
Okay.
So I'm going to click off of that, and then I'm going to come over here and, hopefully we can zoom this out here. Okay, this is a, a, three different proposals, and just for clarification, each, each of these proposals would bridge over the city's 2018 and 19 budget. The grant performance period will be at least two years, if not three years. So that gives, allows us that we can bridge it between two of your, your finance years. Uh, let's see if I can zoom this just one more. There we go. I'm going to go over the first one. The first one would be the biggest, largest grant application proposal, and that would be 18 structures. It would total 1.7 million, federal share would be 75%, 1.3 million, the local share would be 442,000 some dollars. Because of the Maumee River Basin Commission receiving that million dollar appropriation, we're prepared to give you, or give you a grant of $215,000 towards that local match. And then your city street department, as they've done in the last grant and are prepared to, in our current grant, would be putting, providing in-kind match to the tune of $148,500, leaving a Decatur cash match of $79,396.25. And that, that would, would allow us to purchase 18 houses. The second option would be to purchase 15 houses, that would be a $1.4 million project. Federal funding would be just a little over a million dollars, the local share would be 355,000. I had to drop our contribution a little bit to 180,000. We're under a state mandate that I have to show that there is local contribution, that was new for us. And so with this, 15 structures, Decatur's in-kind match would be 123,800, and your cash match would be 51,402.50. And that would buy 15 homes. Then the last option would be for 12 structures, it would be a $1.1 million project, 867,000 some dollars in federal money, and the local share would be 289,000 some dollars. Decatur's in-kind match would be $99,800. The Maumee River Basin Commission would pitch in 144,000, leaving a cash match from the city at 45,291 and a quarter.
Rod, do you recall what the city's cash portion figure, what that, what that amount was for, was it 2016 for the six homes?
I can tell you here real quick.
I had a feeling you could.
I already did by memory here, but...
I was thinking it was 65.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too.
And you said that the, the 2016 ones?
Yes, what our cash amount was, or will be.
Okay, for the six homes, Decatur's cash match was 62,718.75. Your in-kind contribution was 45,000.
Three, three times a houses for...
Yeah.
I think we discussed this before, we had a motion on this.
You did discuss this before, and that's, that's the key, is that for 62,000, 62.7, we got six houses torn down from our, from our coffers.
Cash, the in-kind was higher, but...
Yep.
16,000 more.
That's a lot of in-kind. It's over two years, the germy can spread it out, Germy's totally confident that they can do it. When they did, when they, when he goes down there to do that, they don't mess around. It doesn't take them long to tear out five houses, bam, and that's all out.
Your street department as, does an absolutely outstanding job, and much better than a lot of contractors that I've seen in other communities. So I, my hat's off to, to the street department.
And it is over a two-year period, which that also...
Let me ask this question, though, if, if we are going to figure it over a two-year period, and we are going to go with 18 structures, are we going to say that we're doing that over a two-year period? What if he comes in next year and wants to do another 18 structures? I mean, I know you said the money's running out, I just, figuratively speaking, for us, are we not going to do any next year, or are we going to put it to the two-year project?
We can only do these when Rod has the funds, cycle to do them. Do you expect, you're not really expecting one, but is there a chance there would be one?
Another grant application next year?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I'm going to, I'm always going to say yes, and I'll tell you why, is because in the event, you know, a lot of things are tiny, and in the event that your other two property owners on Meadow Lane would come back and say, "Okay, we're ready." It would, I think it would be irresponsible for us to not go after them. And I don't want, I don't want to leave here tonight thinking that that's, that, well, on the maximum, the 2, the $215,000, if we come, would come back with another application, I'm going to be, "Well, we have funding, we can give you some next year." Like, we, we received a million dollar appropriation, so it's not like we can't match with you if we would do another project. And that project, an application submitted in 2018 would not be approved until 2019 and be implemented in either 19 or 2020.
I would make one suggestion, I'm down there at least once a week with code enforcement, and if you just drive out to that area, those homes, a lot of them are really deteriorating. Ruffs are looking terrible. It's, 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 it's an area that just, I don't see a lot of improvement. So whatever we can do as a city, how many ever homes we can take out, I think it'd be beneficial to the city.
Yeah, he's, he's right, there's, particularly on Meadow Lane, that's terrible.
Um, my only suggestion is, I, I think we should take the maximum amount and take it most advantage, you're not going to buy houses like this when they're, when they're willing to go any cheaper, in my opinion, with this grant, et cetera. So I think, my personal opinion is, I think we need to do that. I think on our police, fire and all these guys, I think that's going to create a lot of less hassle for us, but my, my longer-term thinking on this thing is, is that I think we better be thinking about tearing out the, the roads. I mean, I don't know why we need to maintain a road in those areas if we're not going to allow anybody else to build on them. I'm not saying tear out the infrastructure underneath the sewer, the water, but let's make that inhabitable in the future and not be, I mean, I, I don't want to put a mandate on this, I want to put a permanent fix on this thing, unless there's something we can do for the city to make that a, a, a better place for us as a community. I don't want any more residents in there.
Well, Meadow, Meadow Lane you have to keep open because you have the boat ramp back here.
Right, on the lake.
Well, one to two.
Oh, okay, I was thinking this was, I was thinking this was north, this is north.
And this will be gone. Woodcrest will be tearing down as Evergreen.
Get tore down.
So that will be gone.
Do they know that?
Yes.
It was in the paper.
It's, it's public knowledge.
Okay. I don't know anything more than that, Rod. My bad.
And then this becomes a free...
Whatever, I just don't want to...
I agree with that.
But my, my, do we need a motion, or what do we need to do? Well, more discussion?
I put this screen back up there because if, if that project is successful and we take that down, then you could actually access that boat ramp through this way.
True.
Is that the church?
Yep.
No, that's Evergreen Assisted Living. Oh, okay. But that's all depending on who owns that at the time, and that's not been determined, yeah.
Is it ANH, is it?
That's who owns it, yes.
And they are going to be building over, across the main at Woodcrest.
And you can't, you can't take out Meadow Lane if there's still two residences there.
Right, right. But I'm just saying.
Yeah.
We got infrastructure running back through there, we got to get through all of them.
Right.
Horse names on stack.
Because of the loop?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got to act it to the name.
Yep. So yeah, it's not going anywhere, that's part of it. I was just thinking for the street, but yeah, I mean, if, while it's back there and they have to access it, that doesn't mean it's, got to be the first street we plow. No.
I mean, likely, there's nobody going to build on, on these properties.
They can't.
They can't.
So that's what we want.
Yeah. Yeah, then I can be able to, you know, somebody bought the property and wanted it.
Well, the positive part is, is that it is, hopefully it would be less maintenance and less.
Oh, it would be. And it helps Decatur in our long-term flood plan because it gives the river more area to go. Everywhere there's a house, river can't go there right now because the house blocks it. You take that house out of the equation, gives the river more area to go, less flooding at Stratton, less flooding everywhere else, so.
Giving land back to the river.
Giving, yes.
This is an odd question, but is that all land then in the flood plain? Like, it can't, can it be?
It can be used for limited purposes, but it can't be used for residential or structures.
But it can be?
Parks.
Parks.
Nothing permanent.
Yeah, but ain't permanent structures.
Lake. Well, Rod, I think it's really exciting that we, that we're, we're looking at this. You kinda need to be moving on this, right, as far as?
Yeah, we, the, I've been in the middle of doing everything I can in preparing for an application. The application period is opening up here in, I think, two weeks. The state has informed me that they want that application as soon as possible, so that, you know, things can move forward.
And based on how we, how many we go with, we'll decide which blue stars get assigned and whatever. Like I said, you can circle that number four twenty-one because he's definitely gonna get a blue star, being on Meadow Lane. So regardless of how many we go with. So I guess at this point, yeah, if anyone is so inclined.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the eighteen structures with our Decatur cash match of seventy-nine thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars twenty-five cents and our Decatur in-kind match of one hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred.
Yep, and those numbers, Rod, can fluctuate a little bit, depending on which actual property it is, because it's gonna be based on the appraised value of the structure.
So should we not include the exact numbers in those?
Yeah, just, yeah, I think the exact number is gonna be flexible.
Yeah, if I.
You have to issue for eighteen structures.
I'll make a motion for eighteen structures to be removed through this process.
That's a good way of saying it, yeah.
I have a motion.
Say.
And a second. Any more discussion before we vote? You guys, everybody good? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Rod, we're moving on, bud.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Rod, do you have any idea how much your budget between the two years?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I, if I can, you know, reverse that question, if I know, I can work with you, I guess is what I'm saying. And just like, I know the question earlier about your street department, one of the things that we can do is, we'll work very closely with Jeremy and make sure that we, you know, back under Mayor Fred Ish, we were, had the flood record. And we were trying to buy properties and get them closed and tear them down as fast as possible. Now we're in more of a pre-disaster time period, and we can make sure that the timing and the scheduling, as well as the budgeting, is working with your departments and the budget. So, you know, I can work with you on that, but if you give me a heads up, that way we'll know, you know, we can tailor the offers to purchase such that we don't have all eighteen people calling City Hall saying, you know, when am I gonna close, so that we can hold up on the offers to purchase and.
Spread it out.
Spread it out.
Yep, that's good.
I agree.
Because they do do that. They find other places to move and they need to close, and they call, when are we gonna have a closing? So, yeah. Does anybody have comments?
So, Phyllis, if you can let me know what, what kind of numbers you're thinking of, that way we'll sort it out.
I agree with you. Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time to come down tonight.
So what we're asking, Rod, I guess Tyler, and I agree with him, is that you think you can spread that over a two-year period?
Yes.
And if we wanted to continue and go for the one next year, would that still be available to us?
Yes.
If some of these people change their mind and come out, yeah.
Yeah, the key, the key for an application next year is that Congress funds the FEMA program. That'll be the key.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Phyllis, I think you have a couple of conflict of interest forms. One for Don Bergdahl. Don's family has a business here in Decatur, right downtown here, and we may do business with them, therefore Don needed to sign a conflict of interest form. And the other one is Roger Gage, who we thought was retired and long gone, but.
He's still a volunteer fireman, though.
He's still, yep, still a volunteer fireman, and.
For general construction.
And then, yeah, Roger is very possibly gonna be doing some general construction and remodeling at various places in and around the city, so therefore he needs to sign it. No, no, from the back.
We have a phone.
Anyhow, I just need to make a matter of record that both of Don and Roger have both signed conflict of interest forms. Make that a matter of record.
So, move.
Second. I got a motion and a second to do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Um, we talked about the reappropriation, reappraisal of funds for code enforcement, and that's just, we don't need to do that anymore tonight. I think we have an event forum for the Kikianga Festival, and that's been turned in by the chamber. It has been signed by all three department heads that needed to sign that. And the application, they have street closings listed here. The festival actually begins Thursday, August seventeenth, and runs through Sunday, the twentieth. And I guess, does it begin before the seventeenth?
Yeah, there's a worship service on Wednesday night at 6:00 P.M., but we wanna be able to set up some tents and things for some of the events coming up. That's why we asked for the street.
So, yeah, the street closings don't start until the seventeenth, and they're very, depending on what the event is, a couple streets that need closed on the seventeenth, a couple on the eighteenth and nineteenth and the twentieth. So if anyone needs to see this, I can distribute it, we should get a copy to the newspapers so that they have that and to the radio. Otherwise, the application all looks good, they have their certificate of liability insurance. And having said that, could I make them have a motion?
To make a motion to approve the Kikianga event request.
Motion and?
Second.
A second.
I have to sustain from vote conflict of interest with Chamber of Commerce.
True. All in favor?
Aye.
I have three ayes, no opposed. This has been passed, so Kikianga's good to go. And the last thing, I left laying on my desk back in my office, and therefore I'm gonna have to ask Craig to kinda help me out here. It's a request for city sponsorship for another chamber event, and that is the Highland Games. It's coming up October seventh. And the chamber sent me some information on it. Like I said, I can go get it if you want me to, but it had a couple different levels of sponsorships.
Yes, I, I will.
Discussion. I will brief everyone here again. For Calthumpian in the year two thousand sixteen, Kikianga, last year we gave two hundred fifty, this year we upped it to five hundred. Fireworks, we gave three hundred seventy-five dollars. Decatur Sculpture Tour, we sponsored at the one thousand dollar level. Calthumpian, seven hundred fifty dollar level. And then we also have thirty-one hundred dollars each year that we give for Decatur dollars for employees. And on May twenty-second, when this was all calculated, and that was based on Kikianga getting two hundred fifty dollars, we had a balance of just a little over seven hundred dollars for the rest of the year. Now, we used two hundred and fifty of that because we upped Kikianga from two fifty to five hundred. So we only have about four hundred and fifty dollars in the promotional fund left. Do you remember what those sponsorship levels were, Craig?
Three hundred, five hundred, seven fifty, a thousand.
Three hundred, five hundred, seven fifty, and a thousand. And the promotional fund, when you say promotional account, is that council promotion? Okay.
Mary also has a promotion.
And I have a promotional account, too. So we could go the five hundred easily enough, even though only at four fifty, we could take some from mine.
For the Calthumpian, have we already donated?
Uh, we, have we done, have you already asked for Calthumpian this year, Craig?
No, 'cause it's not till the end of October.
I don't recall it either. So we may have, you know, we may not be able to increase Calthumpian if we.
Well, how big is the mayor's promotional account?
I have that in my filing cabinet, but it's not as big as yours. Here we go. If me, if you wanna take a break, I'll go get my file, I can look.
You know, it might be nice just to discuss it, the table, till next time.
We got time?
We start. It's October, right?
October seventh.
Yeah, we got a couple months.
Well, I had a note handed to me today that you wanted me to do this.
I appreciate that, and thank you.
Okay, so we'll table that until next meeting.
I guess my only question is for Phyllis, is there anywhere else? I mean, obviously, we're gonna be out of money for Calthumpian Parade, and I think that's a pretty big event.
Well, I think she was taking in the seven hundred and fifty, right?
It's already accounted for.
Yeah, that was accounted for. We have seven hundred and fifty that we can use for Calthumpian. She's saying that if we give three seventy-five to fireworks, a thousand to sculpture.
Okay.
I did deduct that one.
Okay, that was my.
And the Decatur dollars.
Yeah. Okay, yep. So, okay, we'll table till the next meeting. And that is all that I have on the agenda. So with that, I will go to department heads. Greg?
Oh, thank you.
Kevin?
Hello?
Kurt?
Hello, sir.
Don?
Unless you want me to report on the current project.
I, I would like a little bit, yes, if you could maybe, Master Drive update?
Master Drive has passed all pressure and purification tests. They are hooking houses left right now, and they're about a third of the way down from the north, working their way south.
That's great. Good to hear.
St. Mary's Nature Preserve is on hold because of the river was flooding it. Cater Building, everybody see that's going away?
Yep. Those are the biggies.
Monroe Street sidewalks are finishing the side, side are on, and then there'll be a little break.
There'll be a little break before you cross the street?
Yeah, hitchcock that's the week for a week.
Okay. Okay, so once they, once they get down, as far as two brothers on this side of the street.
They pour out that far?
Yeah, yeah.
And they'll be pouring that back in this week, and then it'll hold up for.
For a week or so, okay. Good.
And that's all I got.
Ann? Bill? Okay, um, council members, anything?
I got one thing, I guess if budget time is coming up, do we need to talk about putting a little more money in the promotional?
We can.
Or get to the next chair.
I'd be great.
Yeah. We keep having more festivals, we're gonna need more promotions.
And we're gonna promote our city, I think that fund needs to be a little bit.
Good suggestion.
I would agree. I would agree.
Do we need to come up with an amount now, or do you have to?
We can do that when we go over the budget, we can add.
If you have an idea, I mean, I could go ahead and put it in, and then we can.
What's the total amount again?
What's that?
What's been the total amount in that line, approximately?
I didn't bring my budget book with me, but I can't remember what I told you guys. I think I emailed you all what it was. Do you have that with you?
It's not on this email. But that's a good suggestion, Tyler.
Probably should be starting to talk about it before we get into this.
I mean, I mean, these sponsorships, you know, three fifty here and seven fifty there, they go a long way in helping for the, for the festivals.
Well, the neat part about it is, is the festivals are for all, and the, and the people that volunteer to help with these type of festivals, you know, are not getting paid for the most part, and.
And, you know, it's our way, the city way of encouraging and, and helping out.
But I'm just saying, if we increase that budget by a couple thousand dollars in the scheme of our budget, that's not a lot of money, but the two thousand dollars is a lot of, a lot of extra money we can put out, so fifty.
Fifty-two hundred?
Five thousand. Is that what it was? That's impressive, Tyler. You got that right there in your.
If we overbudget it, where would it go at the end of the year? General fund?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We went from five thousand to maybe seven thousand, you think, for now?
I'd go ten, just because you could always go back to general fund. It's not too far out of line.
I'd be in favor of that, too, if it's.
A ten?
Doable. Because many things could be deemed promotional.
Greg? Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, Tyler. Good suggestion.
While we're talking about the future budget, as far as what kind of money, we, I believe we've had money set aside in the budget for renovation to upstairs.
Yeah, that's something that Phyllis might talk a little bit about.
Something that we wanna, I believe it's something we need to continue and add to that, that fund, because I believe it's important to get that upstairs in use. And there's a lot of different purposes it could be used for, and some of it would generate revenue as well.
Possibly. Yep. Yeah, I just wrote this down, I will contact Martin Riley. Maybe I can get that ball rolling as far as getting an engineer's estimate on what's gonna take to make that work. Did we set anything aside this year for that, Phyllis?
I was thinking we did, I don't remember.
So if we don't use that this year, that's just gonna go into the general fund? It doesn't get rolled back into?
I don't reappropriate it, but like, we can.
I would like to see us reappropriate.
Maybe we wanna get some, get the ball rolling in this year.
I would like to see us reappropriate it so that it, we're building a pool.
Either that, or we go ahead and get started this year.
Correct.
And then budget more next year, so. I'll get with Jack Daniel of Martin Riley.
Jack Daniel?
That's his name.
Did, did they already have drawings for the whole building or something? Is this not based to?
We have a rendition.
I love that.
Yeah, yeah, well, right after I became mayor, I got with Jack, and he emailed something, and Nate was still here. I'll forward it on to all of you tomorrow.
Thank you.
And it was just a rendering of what we could possibly do, and what, what part of the building the city could use, what part of the upstairs we could lease out to others if we wanted to, et cetera.
I think it probably should be reappropriated to stay in that account, because even if we don't do anything this year or next year.
Would like to.
That account, it's basically like a fire truck that we talked about, like, that account needs to grow, so that the money is there to do it when we want to do it.
Yeah, that's my point, yes. Agreed.
I agree. Good discussion.
Thank you again.
And for the lower public safety, do you guys remember what you wanted the police and fire to budget in that lower public safety fund? Do you remember? Or did?
How much?
I think, did we just stay with the same amount during that?
And weren't there some changes this year?
I think you wanted to, wasn't it that you wanted to at least keep a hundred thousand back that you could add to?
Okay, was it keep a hundred thousand back? I couldn't remember what.
I think that's what I remember.
They were, they were keeping it back, keeping it in.
In anticipation of at some.
Explain that.
Explain all this, right?
Oh, yeah, poor Scott, I have no clue.
Yes, Scott's gonna, would you, could you explain that better than me? I know you can, for Scott's benefit.
I'm not sure I can either. It's a, it's a, it's a local income tax that is designed for public safety, so the fire department and the police department make use of those funds, and it can be used, it's, I think council said that they didn't want it used for salary, it was for capital projects, that sort of thing. But then they also wanted to build that fund up over time because they know that down the road, there's gonna be some significant capital expenditures. If we have to go buy a fire truck, you know, those are pretty expensive.
A matter of truck, or.
Right, yeah.
Capital purchases.
So those are big-ticket items, so they wanna kind of build up a reserve so that when they're faced with that kind of an expenditure, they've got a source to go to that can help when they're faced with that kind of an expenditure, they've got a source to go to that can help fund that.
It has its own fund, so whenever they don't spend it, it stays in there.
And if we.
Did you get an email about changes for this year to that?
What's that?
Did you get an email about changes to that this year?
Well, yeah, they're, the, the, it's now a local income tax. It's not, you don't have all these different taxes. You don't have COED and CED and, uh, you know, it's all now a local income tax, but then there's, it's all called this, and then it gets kind of divvied back up in a similar way, but it's.
Yeah, I still get three separate checks for it, so I don't know really. I mean, I guess the county can change that.
They can. They have the ability to change it.
Okay. Any other suggestions?
Handkeeper tax on a county level? Can we do that?
That's on a county level.
It has to be county?
Yeah, so. It's done, it's done through, if I remember correctly, it's done through the income tax council. We have, we have like 28, 28 boats out of 100. It's all based on population. Because the county has the majority of the population, they control, they control their decision.
I do have one other thing to report before we look for, uh, closing, and that is on my report. We had a progress meeting with NDOT on the 224 project a couple days ago, I guess it was yesterday. And Phase 3 was supposed to have happened this week, and then they delayed it to next week. And Monday, when we met, they delayed it to the week after.